It started. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 11th, 2022. Can we have the roll?
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber.
Here.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got some minutes on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? It's moved by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Eber. Any objection? Seeing none, that motion passes. The minutes are approved. Next up are disclosures. Commissioner Eber.
None to disclose.
Commissioner Polis.
I do. My employer, Lowndes Marine Associates, is a prime consultant to DOT on the Spinnard Road Phase III Corridor project, which is on the agenda as a non-public hearing case tonight. I'm actually the hydraulics engineer on the project, so just thought I'd disclose
Okay, so I think we'll need a motion to, it would be in the affirmative to direct you to participate, and then we can vote on that. So if someone is interested in providing a motion. Moved by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Strike.
Yes, I have moved to direct Commissioner Polis to participate in case number 2022-0031.
Okay, Commissioner Ron, you're welcome to speak to your motion.
I believe the Commissioner has made his intentions known to the Commission. I won't argue against that, and that, I think, carries weight with me in terms of how I would vote on the motion.
Seeing no other comments, we'll go ahead and just call the vote. And so to clarify, this is a motion to direct him to participate. So an affirmative of Okay, that motion does not pass, so Commissioner Polis, you will be recused from that matter. Okay, moving on, Commissioner Winchester.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Ron.
No disclosures.
And Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
And I also have no disclosures. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have resolutions for approval. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Any objection? All right, next item on the regular agenda is case number 2022-0031. So Commissioner Polis, since you will not be participating, you can leave the room, and we'll let you know when we're ready to move on. Thank you. And can we have a presentation from staff, please?
Yes, you may, Chair Gardner. All municipality of Anchorage transportation projects are required to follow a strategy for developing context-sensitive transportation projects. There are three steps in this process. The first two steps are the concept report and the design study report. Those both go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The concept report for this project went before the Planning and Zoning Commission as an informational item at its meeting on February 1st, 2021. Tonight, the Commission has the Design Study Report abbreviated as the DSR. The primary decision of the Commission for the DSR is for alternatives development, evaluation, and screening criteria, and alternatives decision. Thirteen topic areas guide the review of the DSR. They include existing conditions, design standards, alternatives, compliance with Title 21, long and short-term impacts for land use and right-of-way acquisition, utility and infrastructure impacts, street illumination, maintenance, environmental constraints, non-motorized access, public involvement, and cost. The Commission's review shall include these topic areas but is not limited to these thirteen topic areas. I'll briefly go over the comments we've received for this case from some agencies, the alternatives, and then review the department's recommendation. For comments, private development recommended coordination with Cook Inlet Housing on the improvement-to-public-place agreement for the new sidewalk, accessible ramps, and a transit stop. Other comments were informational or supportive of the preferred alternative. This project is the third phase to improve the Spinnard Road corridor between the Spinnard Road intersection with Minnesota Drive and the Minnesota Drive on-ramp. There are currently four 11-foot travel lanes with two lanes in each direction and an additional turn lane to head left on Minnesota Drive from Spinnard Road. The right-of-way width varies from 60 to 65 feet. There are short-side segments that reach 70 feet in width. The DSR describes high levels of use by pedestrians and bus riders in the existing project corridor, but minimal or nonexistent pedestrian and transit facilities. Utility poles interrupt the sidewalk. Those are proposed to be moved underground during the project's construction. This was also done for other segments of the Spinnard Road corridor that have been improved previously. The municipality of Anchorage maintains Spinnard Road. Most of the funding for this project would come from the Federal Highway Administration. The alternatives include a no-build option, a four-lane option, two iterations of a three-lane option with 60-foot right-of-way, and four iterations of a three-lane option with 65-foot right-of-way. The preferred alternative identified in the DSR is Alternative 1 with a three-lane road diet from the existing four-lane configuration and a 65-foot right-of-way. This alternative would be two 11-travel foot lanes in each direction, and then one 13-foot two-way center-left turn lane. The alternative proposes shared multi-use pathways and on-street bike lanes, so that would provide an option for faster and more experienced bicyclists to ride on the street, and then less experienced bicyclists could ride more slowly on the multi-use pathway. The multi-use pathway and bike lanes in both travel directions closely match the Spinnard segment north of the project corridor. That will provide continuity and clarity and increase safety for travelers. That pathway, the eight-foot pathway, meets the design standards for a multi-use pathway. The reduction of the travel lanes from four to three would reduce maintenance for the road lanes. There would be additional snow removal required for the pedestrian bicycle and transit facilities. The preferred alternative does not require a variance from Title 21. It would require a waiver for some items in the design criteria from the municipal engineer. Similar waivers were granted for some of those items in previous phases to upgrade Spinnard Road. The existing zoning is B3 or General Business District on both sides of Spinnard Road. The land use map showing future land use shows most of the properties surrounding this section of Spinnard Road as Main Street corridor. The additional and upgraded pedestrian and bicycle facilities, as well as the request to underground the utility poles in the preferred alternative, are consistent with the Main Street corridor land use designation. The design study report explored alternatives that were similar to some examples shown in the Spinnard Corridor Plan for upgrading that section of the road. Spinnard Road is a high priority for pedestrian and bicycle corridors in the AMATS non-motorized plan, and it's also listed under projects in the AMATS Metropolitan Transportation Plan. With that, the department recommends approval of the preferred alternative, which has the three-lane road diet and 65-foot right-of-way width, Alternative 1, that was identified in the context-sensitive solutions design study report for the AMATS Spinnard Road rehabilitation Minnesota Drive to Benson Boulevard project, subject to three conditions of approval, which are the alternative must be in substantial compliance with plans in file, the project moves forward to submit a plans-in-hand for review by the Urban Design Commission, and three, that the waivers are obtained from the municipal engineer for deviations from the design criteria manual. There are also three recommended advisory comments. They are, in brief, one, to coordinate with the Cook Inlet Housing Authority on the improvement-to-public-place agreement as recommended by private development; two, that additional information should be provided as the design moves forward for intersection changes in the enhanced street crossings; and three, a notation that maintaining the pedestrian and bicycle facilities at the Spinnard Road Minnesota Drive intersection is consistent with the Spinnard Corridor Plan if further study proves that that option is feasible. Members of the petitioner's project team are in attendance tonight with a brief presentation and are available for questions. Thank you. That is the end of my staff report.
Thank you. Any questions before we move on to the presentation from the project team?
Good evening. Thanks. Good evening. My name is Joe Taylor, and I'm with Lowndes Marine Associates, and I am the design team project manager for this project.
I'm sorry to interrupt before you get started. We have someone who's on the phone, and it's hard to hear if it doesn't really capture it, so I don't know if you can lift it up.
Is this better?
That is much better.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to talk to you tonight about the Spinnard Road Rehabilitation Project. This is the third and final phase of a project that began all the way back in the early 2000s. The purpose of the project is to rehabilitate Spinnard Road and bring it up to current standards, and really, the emphasis of this project is to improve non-motorized facilities. The first two phases were led by the municipality of Anchorage, and the second phase was just constructed in 2018. This third and final phase is being led by the Department of Transportation, as it's a federal aid project. We're at about the 35% design level, and we're designing the work to the MOA design standards and following the CSS process. We're also following the National Environmental Policy Act process, or NEPA process, as is required under the federal aid rules. So the conditions that we're trying to remedy are really that the corridor is not very friendly to pedestrians or non-motorized travel, and it doesn't meet standards. So we have a winding roadway, and it has a lot of developed and dense development along it. So we have almost two dozen driveways that connect into our corridor. It's only a half a mile long, and we have 10 cross streets in that, so it's very dense. We have three intersections on the project. We're bounded at Benson and Minnesota to kind of start and stop the project, and then 36th Avenue comes through the middle of our project. We're accommodating about 10,000 vehicles a day right now is the current AADTs, and as was noted, we have a four-lane facility for travel lanes, and only four-foot wide sidewalks for pedestrians is all that's available. The speed limit's 35 miles an hour, and the heaviest constraint on the project is that the right-of-way is typically only 60 feet. There's a few flares that are wider, but 60 feet is about what we have to work with. So under the NEPA rules, we went all the way back to the very beginning and reassessed alternatives, and we looked at a no-build alternative. We looked at an alternative that rehabilitates the existing four-lane facility, and then we looked at a technique called a road diet, which converts four lanes into three. That had been previously selected and constructed on the previous phase, and that's where we focused most of our efforts this phase, and that's what we selected for the preferred alternative. So we looked at six versions of road diet technique on this project, two at 60 feet wide, and then four that were 65 feet wide. The preferred, the selected preferred alternative has two travel lanes, two through lanes, and then a continuous two-way left-turn lane, and then both pedestrians and bicyclists are accommodated by eight-foot multi-use pathways on either side of the corridor. This section also features four-foot wide paved on-street bicycle facilities as another option for bicyclists to choose to use on the corridor. This meets current MOA DCM standards. It actually exceeds them and is consistent with a recently adopted AMATS non-motorized plan. So one thing we wanted to update or provide an update on is, in our packet, we talk about a few alternatives that were still under consideration. One of them had dealt with the treatment of the facility between Minnesota and 36th. Our set of lines in our plans denoted a match existing condition that had two receiving lanes in the eastbound direction, and that just didn't provide any space or availability for pedestrians. So we've been working for the last year to determine whether or not we could convert that piece of the project to a single-receiving lane, which requires us to do a little bit of work at the intersection. Doing so would allow us to reallocate that space to the pedestrian improvements, and just last week, we got direction from the municipality to proceed in that direction on the project. So we verified it and vetted it, and it works, and that's where we're headed. We wanted to close our remarks with just an update on the public involvement, because we've made a major investment in that piece of this project. There's a lot of folks watching this project. In less than two years, we've held two public open house meetings, and we presented the work at the Transportation Fair. We've presented to AMATS through the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Technical Advisory Committee, the Policy Committee. We've made multiple presentations to the Spinnard Community Council. We actually held a pedestrian-bike walk audit out on the corridor and took a survey there. Probably the one thing that I'd like to point everyone's attention to that is pretty unique for where we are in this project is we've, we connected with every property owner on the corridor, all but one. There's an owner in New York that we weren't able to connect with, but we've gone and visited every property owner on the corridor and had one-on-one meetings with them already and discussed the right-of-way process and acquisition process. So that's a little bit unique. We just wanted to update you on that. With that, I'd like to hold any time I have left for rebuttal, and thank you for your time, and take your questions.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, I was just curious, how does the additional five-foot of right-of-way work out, and are you getting the resistance you previously had, or that the previous phase had, I should say?
We, we're going to pull up, we have a role plot here that might help a little bit. It's a great question. The additional five feet obviously causes some consternation. We're communicating right now basically strip impacts to essentially everybody, but in balancing that out at just a couple of feet on either side, we're able to basically, you know, not impact people in a devastating way, and I think the property owners are really behind the project at this point. You know, they're, they're comfortable with the section because it's the one that was just constructed, and they've got a sense of what that's going to be, so. Thank you. This is just a role plot version. It's in our packet, if you wanted to ask questions about right-of-way.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Taylor. Applaud you and the entire design team, you know, in reading through and becoming familiar with the project, emphasis on increasing safety for non-motorized use of the corridor, striving for consistency and connectivity across the entire section, and consistency with the prior phases as they've been constructed. A few questions. Mike Anchorage had submitted some comments, I think, at two separate times, and I'm most interested in their latest comments, I think, February 11th. They talk about bicycle travel lane should have a width of five feet and an 18-inch striped buffer as secondary if their primary objective of a protected bike lane couldn't be provided for. Can you help me understand how those two specific elements may have been evaluated in terms of the design we're looking at today?
Yeah. What's the date of those comments?
February 11th, and if you have the full staff packet, page 193 at the top.
I guess what I can say, great, great question. We've heard from Mike Anchorage quite a bit, as you would hope, on this project. We actually met with them and had a work session, sort of a, just a one-on-one working meeting. Mike Anchorage had submitted and drawn a typical section and had promoted that and talked with us about that. In fact, it's one of the four 65-feet-wide sections that we evaluated. I want to show it to you. If you have the full packet here, it's on page 55, is the Bike Anchorage section. And so we worked hard to evaluate this, and, you know, we looked at the protected bike lanes as the big comment or the big driver from Bike Anchorage, and there's a number of reasons why those are not great fits on this half-mile, not the least of which being 35 access points in a half a mile is 70 breaks in a barrier, and so we kind of talked that through. That's a tough fit. And then the protected bike lane, as proposed, doesn't meet DCM or non-motorized plan standards, and so we went back to the national standards and looked at those just to see what we would be dealing with, and they don't fit on the corridor. The national standards call for eight feet for that, and the only way to get that would be to reduce the sidewalk well below the eight-foot and actually chew into what a good sidewalk is. So we've appreciated those comments. We've appreciated working with Bike Anchorage, and we just can't make
Commissioner Strike.
Thank you, and through the chair. My question is somewhat similar to the last chair, Chair, not Chair, Commissioner's question. So I was going to pose mine slightly different was, we've got a multi-use trail path, but we also have a bike path. So is there room to reduce the multi-use downward somewhat in order to widen the bicycle path? I'm not talking about the separation now. We've got eight-foot and four, eight-foot for the multi-use, four feet for the bike. What's wrong with going to seven-foot, five feet, such as was suggested? And I bring that up since it is a multi-use, and multi-use typically is the bicycles, so now we've got their own path, so we got room to reduce the sidewalk, and I say that in reading earlier, too. We're also, through this process, removing a number of poles and the problems that you have with some of the driveways and so forth that puts pedestrians at risk. So, response.
Yeah, great question. Maintaining the eight feet on the multi-use pathway is critical because as we skinny that down, we immediately fall out of that multi-use standard, both for the DCM, and that's what the non-motorized plan calls for. So if we were to shrink that down and reallocate that space onto the street, we could certainly do that in terms of allocating space, but we immediately then fall out of, we don't comply with the standards, because the standards call for a separated bike lane or a multi-use pathway. So if we had a wide on-street facility and a pedestrian sidewalk, we would then not have a separate bike lane or a multi-use pathway, and so we just wouldn't meet the standards.
Is it, is it critical to meet the standards for a multi-use pathway in this case, since we've already removed the bikes off of that pathway? What do you envision that will be used in the multi-use pathway?
Well, we think it is critical, and there's two standards that drive us towards that. We do believe it is critical, and one of the reasons why we believe that is, in talking with the public and talking with the community, we've heard from a lot of bicyclists, for example, that might not be higher-speed or higher-level bicyclists, commuter-style bicyclists, that do have expressed a lot of appreciation for being, having an option off of the roadway and being pushed back. So we think it is critical to accommodate that user.
The concern, and I appreciate that, and I've had lengthy discussions with the police chief on that very topic. As you push more bicyclists into the multi-use trail, now you're subject to all the brakes and the, they're not as protected from all the, the traffic coming in from the left or right, or from the parking lot areas and so forth, whereas in the bicycle lane you are, theoretically.
Yeah.
And that's where a lot of the accidents do happen with bicyclists, is on the trail, not in the street.
Yeah.
Let me rephrase.
Oops, sorry.
The accidents don't happen on the street for bicyclists that are abiding by the direction and so forth of the law when they're riding with the traffic, et cetera. We have a lot of accidents that happen because they're crossing in different points, because they're not acting like bicyclists or like a car, and they're not predictable. That's when a lot of these accidents happen. So my concern is that you could actually, by forcing more bicyclists onto the, this particular multi-use pathway, we could see more accidents.
Yeah, we, we feel like the beauty of our section is that we're not forcing bicyclists anywhere. We actually are giving them options, and so the four-foot of paved on-street, that does meet standards. It's actually a half a foot wider than what was constructed just to the north past Benson, so we've worked to further reduce space in there and make that a little bit wider, and so we're meeting current standards there. We know that the folks that move at pace want to be more visible and closer so that they're not getting hooked by all those driveways, and we realize that. So we're meeting that, but we're also being able to squeeze in two facilities that do meet standard in this right-of-way for everybody, and so that's what we think the advantage of this section is.
I'm curious, in the various discussions you've had with the biking community, what, what their experience has been as expressed to you in the section that's to the north of this, that, you know, has a similar alignment, at least with respect to the on-street bike lane?
Yeah. Lots of comments on that. We have pages, I think, are, you know, we've got 100 pages of chat comments here at our open house meetings. There's a great record of that, and, you know, everybody, everybody has a comment. Some folks love them. Some folks have said they're great. We hear a lot of comments about snow plowing and wintertime maintenance. That's a huge comment that we're hearing about, the bike lane facilities. Some users don't want them. You know, some users want to go in a different direction, and so there's a broad array of comments that we're hearing about this, but generally, we've even talked with folks and evaluated, two of our sections come right out of Spinnard Corridor Plan, and we've talked with folks at public open house meetings that were involved in that and kind of explained the options and compared and contrasted, and gotten favorable feedback, and folks go, oh, you know, I didn't really realize about that option. I really do like that. The continuity piece is one that we hear a lot as well. Cyclists that are traveling at pace coming south across Benson like the idea of that facility not disappearing when they cross Benson, and so having continuity between the two phases is one thing that we've heard is important to folks.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Taylor, seeing clarification, you talked about eastbound traffic coming off of northbound Minnesota, making that right-hand turn, if I'm orienting correctly, reducing from two receiving lanes down to one, which would be a change from what we see in the design study report. study report. I'm looking at Figure 2, which still shows those two lanes. And so, first I want confirmation that, yes, that's the area where a change has been agreed upon, and then I'm going to flip over to Ms. Appleby to see if we need to do something with changing the department recommendations. I just want to make sure that if we take action on this, we're accommodating what's been updated there.
Yeah, so, let me explain that a little bit better. The existing condition at Minnesota has two lanes of traffic coming eastbound, maybe we can get a better picture here. Oh, thank you, Rachel. Maybe we can just get a little look across the street. So, so, right here at Minnesota, when the, when the project was initially sponsored and started, it had a constraint on it that said, "No improvements to Minnesota, that's the hard limit to the project." And so, that, I mean, that was a constraint. And so, if you can't make improvements to Minnesota, you are matching the existing condition. Those two things are the same thing. And so, in our plan, we show two lanes, right here, we have two lanes coming across Minnesota existing, they're not shown here in proposed, but that's the existing condition. So, we showed two travel lanes, receiving lanes coming across, and no space for pedestrian accommodations here, because it simply takes out the entire row of parking at Center Bowl, it takes out Office Tech, it takes out a house here at 3701. What we communicated in our report, in the section under Alternatives Under Further Consideration, is that, hey, we're working hard to reassess that, and that's part of all the presentations that we made to the Policy Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee, for example. We had to go seek permission to get to go look at this and sort of relook that whole intersection and get permission to do that. And that happened about midsummer last summer. Then we started working on the project. There's a railroad track back here on Spinnard, about 1,300 feet away, and the big concern was, if we change the striping, as we're showing here, and only bringing one receiving lane across, are we going to queue and hit that railroad track, was one of the things we had to focus on. We've solved that riddle, and so, we just got endorsement and clearance to move with this, which is in the packet, is under Alternative Consideration, which changes the striping and only brings one lane across, as we're showing here. And then you can see, that second lane is gone, and instead, we're continuing the eight-foot multi-use pathway and on-street bike facility, but still preserving Center Bowl and this tight, tight building right here at Office Tech, and then missing another building. So, that is, that's the direction that the project's headed.
If I could respond to Commissioner Ron as well. So, on pages 62 and 63 of the staff packet, that shows those two different layouts for the Spinnard, the Spinnard Road intersection with Minnesota Road, or, sorry, Minnesota Drive. And then, in the department recommendation is for Figure 12 on page 63, which cuts that receipt from the two lanes to one lane. So, we're recommending, as the project moves forward, the plans in hand, that that is what they're looking at, basically, because that's consistent with planning documents.
It's huge. I mean, it's a great thing.
And I have just a quick related question. I saw a number of comments that were included, express concern about the current proposal to abandon bike infrastructure for a quarter of a mile between Minnesota and 36th Avenue. I took that to be referring to the two receiving lanes, is that your understanding as well?
Hundred percent, yeah. Yep, that's, I mean, the public obviously doesn't want us to leave it out there just sitting like that, but, you know, it took a little bit of engineering to make sure that we could make the change.
Well, I'm not seeing any further questions in the queue. We've been tracking your time, you've got four minutes for rebuttal, to the extent you want to take advantage of that, but no obligation.
I believe I would yield that back. Thank you for your comments.
May I ask a question? Sorry for not being able to queue, queue myself in.
Yeah, sorry about that, Commissioner Krishna, go ahead.
Thank you. I saw a few public comments about crosswalks, wanting frequent crosswalks. Could you speak to where the planning is in terms of that?
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that, and my apologies when, you know, I probably should have brought this up previously. There were two things that we had heard, kind of with respect to that. Crosswalks certainly are a talking point at every meeting that we go to, both crosswalks and more than just paint, what are we going to do in the median, or what sort of median treatment might we do? And we know that we're going to be doing crosswalks, or we know that we're going to be doing median treatment, for sure. Right now, the federal aid process, the NEPA piece, has us stopping design work at what we're calling 35%. We can only do the design work that supports the broad footprint and getting to that complete NEPA document or that environmental permit. So, a lot of the work with respect to how we're going to cross the street, the studies that we're going to do with respect to that, or where they're going to go, is going to come a little bit down the road, but we certainly are going to be dealing with that, just like on page 2.
Follow-up question. The intersection at 36, right now, that's a turn lane going east, I know, off of Spinnard Road. Is it anticipated that it'll have its own still dedicated turn lane that won't, or will this be the middle lane? And on the three-lane option, will that just continue to be the middle lane with a turn signal direction?
Let's zoom out real quick, and maybe a picture will just describe it a little bit better.
And I mention that only because that is probably your single biggest main intersection that cross-street.
Yeah. Under the, under the concept of going to a single receiving lane, we've developed, what did we do here? Can you zoom in hard on 36th, if you could? Sorry. It's an excellent question, and, you know, I just want to zoom in hard and look at sort of the turn pocket that we've developed there. There's not, I mean, the detail on this is really, you know, to say 30% or 35%, I mean, we just received permission to look at this. So, we are developing that turn pocket there, and the concept would be that we are not making major intersection improvements at 36th. So, we've got, it looks like we've got, we've striped this to show this through lane for bicyclists, and then our right turn pocket is the technique that we've got drawn right now.
And then, the traffic that's coming south on Spinnard Road that would turn west on to 36, or east onto 36, other side.
Oh, you're trying to go this way? Sorry. This is north, is here to the right, east, west. And so, there's a, there's a through right here.
Okay, the shaded area that you have right there, where your pointer is right there now, that shaded area right below that, is that the turn lane going?
Yeah, this way.
East?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of intersection design work to do when we get to advanced design, for sure.
Okay, I see no further questions here. Commissioner Krishna?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your time. Got nothing pending here in the queue, so, what's the will of the body on this one? Motion by Commissioner Strick.
Thank you, and through the Chair. I'll take a stab at this. In the move in Case 2022-0031, to approve the three-lane road diet and 60-foot, 65-foot right-of-way with alternative one preferred, identified in the context-sensitive solutions design study report for the AMET Spinnard Road Rehabilitation Minnesota Drive to Benson Boulevard project, subject to Conditions 1 through 3, shown on pages 23 and 24 of the staff report.
That motion is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Strick, would you like to speak to your motion?
I will. When three-lane options were first addressed and presented, as opposed to the four lanes with a turn lane in the middle and so forth, I was an opponent against it and didn't like them, and didn't like what was happening on Spinnard Road initially and how the reduction or the diet and so forth was taking place. But having driven through there on any number of times, both on bicycle and bike vehicle, it works. It's not pretty, it's not, it's not intuitive for a lot of folks, it feels disruptive to a degree, but when put into action, it works. And for that reason, having firsthand piece, it's about time we moved this thing, this one forward, so thank you. That means I'm going to support it.
I guess I'll just chime in to add as well, you know, I think a lot of the focus of the comments and one of the goals of this project was to improve non-motorized traffic, and a lot of the commentary was on the availability of bike lanes. I guess for myself, I, I see the value of the dedicated, protected bike lane that was discussed, I think, given for this particular corridor. It doesn't make sense for the reasons that were provided in the packet. And additionally, I also see the value in having consistency with the section that's just to the north, and I further see the value of having the eight-foot multi-use pathway available, because there are some bike riders that are not of this type, style that would be in the street commuting necessarily, and it gives an option for those users as well. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Okay, seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead and call a vote.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes. So, we, at this point, will be moving on to the agenda items on the public hearing. Before we get to those, I'll read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings, and that is that after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. And actually, before we move on to the first... Commissioner Krishna, are you on the line?
I am, yes.
Okay. We'll move on then to the first public hearing item, which is Case 2022-0015. Is there a report from staff?
Good evening, yes, thanks. Alieska Resort is requesting development master plan approval for a new 38,000-square-foot, 71-dwelling unit multifamily residential building for its employees, employees of the resort. There's already three residential buildings that house a total of 24 dwelling units. That's employee housing number one, this is the second one, it'll be next door. None of the state and municipal reviewing agencies have any objection to this development master plan. There were 60 public hearing notices mailed on March 16th, there were no responses received from the public. Page 92 of your packet has the resolution that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors adopted in support of this development master plan in this project. The department finds that the approval criteria for development master plan are met, that's Criteria A through G, and the department is recommending approval, subject to four conditions of approval. The first two are standard. Conditions three and four were requested by the Traffic Department, Traffic Engineering Department, and I think that the applicant's well on his way to resolving those conditions. Be happy to answer any questions, they have a presentation as well. Thanks.
Okay, I don't see any questions.
I have a question. I'm looking at the information on page 23. Could you just clarify whether this is a modification of an existing Alieska Resort master plan or a new development plan action? Some information on the items on page 23 of our packet would be helpful.
Yes, through the Chair, Ms. Krishna, that's an excellent question. So, in this zoning district, the GRST 1 and 2, these two zoning districts, that the resort, they require an area master plan and then a development master plan, and they already have an area master plan. This is following through on a development master plan for one subarea of that. And the change that's being requested is that this tract of land didn't call for more housing or the amount of housing that they're proposing to build, but the, the amount of housing that they're planning to build, the 71 units, I think it was, is within the tolerance allowed for that type of change, without having to go back and amend the area master plan. It's, it's, it's small enough change that it's just allowed, it's allowed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eber.
Thank you. I had a question on the existing parking configuration on page 17. It said that the parking counts were performed in June of 20, June 28th and 30th in 2019. I guess my concern is, is that typically, like, peak parking time is in the winter at Alieska? I'm kind of wondering why it was done in the summertime.
Through the Chair, I don't know the answer to that question. The, I know that the Traffic Department, so, Alieska Resort has a very good handle on how much parking they need. on how much parking they need, and they have more parking than the resort uses in most cases. The, they've done several parking utilization studies with the Traffic Department, and the Traffic Department has accepted their numbers. Dow Engineering did a big one, you know, just a couple of years ago or something. So there was an update to that for the Nordic Spa. So Traffic Department's comfortable with the numbers, I am too, but I don't have an answer for you about the timing, but that's a smart question, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Thank you.
And I'll just ask a quick follow-up on Commissioner Krishna's question to, I guess, make sure I understood, and I may have missed something, but primarily what we're looking at here is a development master plan, but are we, are we also modifying in some fashion the area master plan that doesn't require a separate public hearing because it meets that threshold? And if we are, I guess, how is that implemented? Because the recommendation that I see for approval just refers to the development master plan, does there need to be something else that specifically addresses the area master plan?
No, those are, everything you said is correct, and there doesn't need to be an amendment to the area master plan. It's just governed in this development master plan. The previous, let's see, yeah, the previous development master plan that I reviewed for Alieska Resort was modified in the same way that we're doing today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to hear from the petitioner.
Good evening, can everyone hear me okay? Yes, okay. My name is Connor Scher, and I work for Z Architects in Girdwood, and I'm here representing Alieska Resort and Palmer Lodging, Seven Glaciers, all the, all the names. And I have with me in the, in the room here two representatives from Alieska, and so they can answer some of the operational questions, if any come up. Some questions have come up at community presentations about the actual operation of the facility that we're proposing, and I'm not able to answer those, so if you have those questions, we should be able to answer them tonight. So this project, as Francis in the staff packet illustrates, is adjacent to the existing employee housing building on Track B of the Alieska Prince subdivision, which is the governing subdivision that has the hotel, that main parking area, the chapel, related to the snows. And so it's, it's between the airport and the, and the hotel, and the only access is off of Hallberg Road. The, the size of the building is, is much larger than the existing building, not only in the number of units, but also just in gross square footage. It's three levels, as opposed to the two that are currently in the existing building. That has been some points of discussion in, in community meetings that we've had. Again, as the, as the report states, it's 71 units, they're going to be a mix of studio and one-bedroom units, split on the, on the three floors. The first floor accommodates Type A and Type B units for that, that portion of, of the building code, and the remainder of the floors are, again, the mix, the uppermost floor is predominantly one-bedroom, and then the lower floors are predominantly studios, with the idea that this facility is going to house sort of mid-management staff who might either have partners or, or be living alone, as opposed to the, the kind of dormitory style living that's in the existing building. Some of the other site improvements that we're making are, we are improving the parking area between the existing building and, and the proposed building, and it, in, in adding some emergency turnaround dumpsters, some of the other facilities that, that are required in Title 21. As, as you may remember, in, a couple of weeks ago, we had a similar development master plan come through for Girdwood. It's a, it's a tool in Chapter 9 of Title 21 that allows a developer to, to make, to make modifications to code, and with the intent of meeting or exceeding those standards. And it is a, it is actually a requirement for this zoning district, with the, with the idea that the public have some input through the community council meetings in Girdwood, but also through a public hearing process, as to what these developments look like. And so it's a very powerful tool, it's, it's really quite a, quite an interesting section of code that really gets flexed, so it's exciting to, to push a project through it. But I did mention that it does allow us to make some modifications to written code, and so as you see in the, in the, in your packets, we are requesting one modification to the language of, of the code, where for multifamily building, unit, buildings in Girdwood, there's a requirement for a children's play space, and our, our instructions and, from conversations with, with Alieska as to who they're envisioning actually living in this facility, it didn't appear that that would be an appropriate amenity for the, for the residents, and with the idea that these people will, will not likely have children or be in, in a position in their lives where they, where they have those sort of family units, and this is really, it then would, would not benefit those residents in the same way that an apartment building would have a children's play space. So instead, we are proposing an alternative to, instead of have a yoga and exercise room in the building that would serve all the residents, and so that, that is our only code request for a modification. We went to the community to two public meetings, actually four public meetings, there, there are two bodies that we present to in Girdwood, and we got some great comments and questions from them, as well as a resolution of support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, that is also in your packet. And so that demonstrates that, that housing is, is a significant need in Girdwood, there are, there are many projects trying to reach a way of providing more housing, and this was seen as, from the community's perspective, as a way of, of addressing some of those housing needs, by providing basically housing for, for Alieska staff, they're able to then stay in, in this new building, as opposed to having to either live in town and commute, and so that reduces their stress levels, but it also then gives more of the existing housing in Girdwood to basically non-Alieska employees, that, so other residents and business owners and employees of other businesses can, can have access to some of those other units then. So it, it does show a continued demonstration of Palmer Lodging and Alieska Resort as being a committed partner with the community and active in, in interest that benefit Girdwood and Anchorage as a whole. So I, I will yield back the remainder of my time, but I thank you all for your attention and welcome your questions.
Commissioner Strick?
Thank you, and through the chair, thank you for the presentation. I do note that on page five, that it states that Alieska Resort is a major employer, and this will be a workforce housing, not vacation rental. Does Alieska charge its employees for this housing?
Thank you, Commissioner Strick, through the chair. I can respond that the, that current employees are charged for housing. The, the current, the existing employee housing building, they do charge the residents for, for lodging, I think that's correct, yes, I'm getting affirmative nods on that, and I believe that's the intent for this facility as well.
With the change in the code that's been requested, since this is not conducive to family rentals and so forth, and it's fully the intent that this would only be used for employee housing, would an appropriate condition be stipulated here that only employee housing? So such that at a later time, we're not seeing a VRBO, we're not seeing other types of rental competing in the marketplace, et cetera. Where, where you're asking for an adaptation and change in code to accommodate for employee housing, and I'm all for that, but I don't want to see something that comes back five years down the road, and opportunity knocks and say, hey, let's put this out for rental now, whether in the summer or whatever, that's not the intent. Would an appropriate additional condition, stipulation be that this project be identified as exclusive for employee housing only?
Thank you again, Commissioner Strick, through the chair. I think that is a, that is a great question, and similar comments have come up from members of the public. As to the, the extent of, of this change, it's, it's so poignant, pointedly written to provide a children's play space for multifamily with the intent that there are families living in the facility. I can't speak to any future use of the building beyond what, you know, our, our, our programming was for the design, but I think that if, if the, if the commission, I, I would just recommend that the, or respond that the commission look at that, that section of code, I think it's a, it's a valuable argument to make. I, I don't know that I can make a position on it one way or the other, though. I, I would just say that there are a lot of sections in Chapter 9 that, that do make specific requests of, of development, and, and sometimes their intent is clear, and sometimes their intent is, 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 is less clear. So, yeah, I know I can't really answer your question.
Well, perhaps you can, perhaps you can engage your client, who you said you have two representatives here. My only concern is that we're here tonight looking for a deviation from the existing code to accommodate employee housing. I just didn't want to be in a situation where later, things change, and all of a sudden we've got this change in the code adapted here, that, oops, well, that one got through us. So maybe you can, maybe you can discuss that with your client during the...
Yeah, thanks. Let me ask if, if they want to say anything to that. Okay, yes, can I bring up the representative from Alieska?
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you.
Great.
Yes, good evening. So thank you for that question. My name is Sasha Girva, I'm the general manager at the Alieska Resort. Just to confirm your concerns there, I can assure you our biggest concern right now, and will be for years, is how to house and to retain our staff at the resort. There will be, the construction and the style of the housing is meant for long-term employees. They are not designed for any sort of operations that Alieska Resort would be doing currently or in the future.
So what I'm hearing is that putting such a exclusive use only for employee housing would not be an inhibitor to your plans?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ron, are you still in the queue?
I intend to be. Thank you through the chair. Mr. Scher, the comments that was levied, it's on page 32 of the staff packet during your Board of Supervisors meeting. Are there any design specifics that are good for the planet? Other ski areas are doing green things.
I can repeat that. Page 32 of the staff packet, commented... It's the mic's fault, am I? All right, we'll try that. Thank you. For the third time, page 32, are there any design specifics that are good for the planet? Can you help me understand this master plan's approach, perhaps some objectives, either explicit or implicit, around green and sustainable design? I do have interest around, you know, things like electric vehicle, parking infrastructure to accommodate needs of employees at this housing, that's one example. Can you tell me how that may or may not be included in this master plan?
Yes, I appreciate the question, Commissioner Ron, and through the chair, as, as we, as we said in, to the, remember the, I'm trying to remember who asked that, of the, of the Board of Supervisors, we, there wasn't a direction to, to include any of these, like, green building strategies from the, from the design purview, so I can't, I can't, I can't say that, that it, that it will have or it won't have these things, it was not included in, in our scope. I guess I will say that, that the, there is a growing interest in photovoltaic power generation in Girdwood, and, and so the, the building is oriented in such a way and has rough slopes that, that would accommodate these potentially in the future. And Alieska is, is basically power, power-independent with, with the use of their turbines in the case of a, of a, of a power shutdown, so there, there may be possibilities for more power generation through, to hydro or, or solar in, in the future. I know that they're working through a revised master plan currently that, that may include some of those elements, but, but this building particularly doesn't include anything like that.
Seeing no further person in the queue here, Commissioner Krishna, do you have any questions before we move on?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've got 2 minutes and 43 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to add another note to Commissioner Strick's question, if I could use the rest of the time.
Yeah, you can respond to his question, and then we'll open it up to comments from the public before you'll have your formal rebuttal time, but feel free to respond to his question further now.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, so Commissioner Strick, through the chair, the, your question about a, a change to the building use in the future, the, the, and related to Commissioner Krishna's question about the, and some of your, some other Commissioner questions about the area master plan for Alieska, it, it makes a provision that, that this section of, of, of the resort called Area B has only employee housing, a chapel, and a maintenance storage yard, does not have any other plans for residential dwellings of any other type, and so if, if the building were to change the use, that, that would constitute a, a change of use in the, in the eyes of the, the area master plan, and so might trigger another public hearing to, to revise that master plan, and at that point, this, the, the topic of, of any modifications of code could come up in the future.
Thank you for that redress, and so, as I understand it, the current master plan otherwise precludes anything other than employee housing from being on this area as a result of the master plan.
Right.
If that's the case, I will yield on that, and thank you so much for the follow-up.
Okay, is there anyone out there who wishes to speak to this case this evening? Okay, is there anyone out there who wishes to speak to this case this evening? Okay, seeing none, now is your opportunity for rebuttal.
Okay, then I have, I have no more to add. Just thank you for your time.
Commissioner Spinelli, I don't know if that's a question for the petitioner.
Yeah, a question for the petitioner. Just to direct at the petitioner, the previous Commissioner question about summer parking versus winter parking, just out of curiosity.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Through the chair, I had meant to address that in my opening remarks and forgot, so thank you for bringing that up again. The, as Francis had originally addressed, the parking study referenced in this development master plan was conducted for the Aliaska Nordic Spa project, and it was done in the summer of 2019. I can't speak to the details of the report, other than what, what information we used to help with our parking calculations. It was prepared by Dowell, by Mr. Brad Coy, who's actually the, the traffic engineer now. And so, as Francis also mentioned, the, the traffic department have, have continued to be accepting of, of the numbers that came from that study.
Just as a follow-up, can we ask the general manager of the resort about the parking, like the actuals, if they have more parking in the winter versus the summer? I didn't quite get that.
So thank you for the question. Sorry, can you give your, can you give your name again, to make sure we captured it? I know you said it before, but.
Yeah, my name is Sasha Jervah.
And how do you spell your last name?
J-U-R-V-A.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So just to clarify on the question, if I could, if I could have that again, just to make sure I answer it correctly.
I believe the original question was that the traffic study was done in the summertime, and there was this question, the commissioner had a question of whether the parking demand is higher in the summer versus the winter. And it just, I guess generally speaking, when is your parking lot the fullest, I guess?
Well, well, I'm relatively new, but I can assure you, unfortunately, we're full, or fortunately, we're full both in the summer and winter. So we have basically two seasons where we're completely full. The major one, the busier one for us, is during the summer, from roughly June until September, mid-September. The parking lot is busy during the winter, but mainly during weekends and then during spring break.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I just have a quick question for staff. Just to confirm what we heard with respect to the area master plan and the requirement that, that the housing be for employees, and if that aligns with our understanding, and if, if any change would require, well, what process, I guess, would be required for any change to that?
Through the chair, Chair Gardner, Connor's description is accurate, that if they changed the, the housing to become a commercial hotel, then they'd, that'd be a change of use, and a, that would bring up, the, the area master plan just calls for parking the chapel and employee housing at this location, not for more hotel rooms. And they'd have to, you know, amend the area master plan or development master plan. So the way that Connor described it is better than I've just done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then at this point, and what's the will of the body? Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. I move in case 2022-0015 to approve the development master plan for Aliaska subdivision Prince Edition Track B Fragment Lots 4, 5, and 7 per plat 2008-126, subject to conditions 1 through 4 shown on pages 6 and 7 of the staff report.
That motion is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I will be supporting this motion, and I appreciate the petitioner's responses and follow-up to the questions we had regarding the use solely for employee housing. Additionally, I'd like to go on record here, there, there was no written testimony against this proposal, nor was there any public testimony for or against.
Commissioner Winchester?
I will also note that we had a support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors for this project, master plan change.
And I guess I'll just note as well that I think the approval criteria in 2109-030F are satisfied for the reasons described in the staff packet. And seeing nothing further here, unless Commissioner Krishna wants to jump in, we will go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is case 2022-0026. We've spoken to this a little bit earlier today, but if there's a report from staff, we're welcome to hear it.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gardner. I will, I will summarize what was in the staff memorandum, and then I will turn it over to Tom Davis, just to add a little bit. Hopefully it won't take too much of your time. Code specifies that the Planning and Zoning Commission shall provide a recommendation to the Assembly on Title 21 text amendments after holding a public hearing and determining if three review criteria have been met. The proposed code amendments comprise six main recommendations to Title 21 for off-street parking and site access, plus a seventh recommendation to consolidate and simplify the code. The six main recommendations are: one, streamlined approvals for administrative parking reductions; two, a more complete menu of available parking reduction strategies; three, area-specific lower minimum parking requirements in urban neighborhoods; four, improved site access for pedestrians, bicyclists, rideshare, and public transit users; five, reforms to site access driveway standards to allow and promote narrower driveways in less paved areas on site; and six, provisions for smaller parking dimensions where appropriate in urban neighborhoods. Goals of these code amendments include: reduce the cost of development, which will enable new housing and business growth; support infill development, redevelopment, and walkability in urban neighborhoods; support alternative travel modes; provide more site planning options and flexibility to yield better design outcomes; simplify and make the regulations easier to use and save time in the review process; and ultimately reflect the character and goals for urban and transit supportive neighborhoods, and increase safety and quality of multimodal site access. As we discussed in the work session, an inter-agency project team reviewed the code language, studied parking utilization rates, vehicle ownership data, future forecasts of land use patterns, the parking reform experience of other cities. We saw it feedback during numerous meetings. There were 116 consultation meetings in total, plus nine general public meetings, an online questionnaire, and a project website. I'll just call your attention to Attachment 6 on page 45. There's a table listing the dates and the organizations we met with, and I feel, I'm proud of all the stakeholders we met with. Several municipal agencies provided statements of no comment or non-objection. The Anchorage Public Transit Advisory Board supported the amendments. Other comments tended to support the code amendments with specific suggested edits. The project team received an additional two comments after the writing of the staff report from Turnigan Community Council and South Edition Community Council that were provided to the commission in a supplementary packet. All three review criteria for evaluating amendments to Title 21 are met as follows. Approval criteria 1 is met. The proposed amendments will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. In particular, the amendments addressed housing conditions in Anchorage with high rent and low vacancy rates, and high home prices with a low housing inventory. It will create the opportunity for smaller and more affordable units, and it will also release lower-income households who are paying higher rents to subsidize parking spaces they may not use. The changes promote active transportation means such as bicycling and walking, and they will make the streets and sidewalks safer, reduce expenditures on health care, reduce roadway congestion, increase property values, more frequent visits to business, attract a workforce, increase public health, reduce noise and pollution. The amendments do not increase spillover parking or require new investments in public infrastructure or changes to municipal street management and maintenance operations. The proposed parking reductions are calibrated to reflect the anticipated parking utilization. Approval criteria 2 is met. These amendments carry out the comprehensive plan and the stated purposes of Title 21. In particular, implementation actions 4.3 and 4.6 of the 2040 land use plan that are under Goal 4 for neighborhood housing, and then associated action 7.2 under Goal 7, compatible land use. It also implements goals and policies of area-specific plans in the AMAT transportation plans as detailed in the staff memorandum. Finally, approval criteria 3 is met. The proposed amendments are necessary or desirable because of changing conditions, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions. As discussed in, in the work session as well, housing prices and rents have gone up, while the housing inventory and rental vacancy rates have gone down. These code amendments will help address the costly and limited supply of Anchorage housing units. The American Planning Association and other organizations have published a growing number of reports, articles, models, and guides that indicate minimum parking requirements to meet demand in an auto-oriented environment for all land uses in every land use context is inefficient and undesirable. The amendments are tailored for urban neighborhoods in Anchorage Bowl. They also help leverage the use of public investments and higher levels of multimodal site access. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Davis to go over some remaining points, and then summarize the department recommendation to the commission.
As provided on page 17 of the staff memorandum, the department recommends approval of the public hearing draft Title 21 text amendment to the parking and site access regulations with the following amendments or changes to the public hearing draft. It's laid out on pages 17 and 18. The first recommended amendment is to amend the proposed Section 21.07.090E7 Open Option Parking District by deleting the proposed subsections A through E that were enabling provisions for creating these parking districts in Title 21, and revising subsection 7F with clarifications and simpler language as shown in the staff report. The second recommended change is tied to the first, and that's to replace this deleted open option parking district content from the Title 21 amendments with moving forward an amendment to Anchorage Municipal Code Title IX Traffic by modifying existing Title IX provisions regarding parking permit districts in order to accommodate a new kind of on-street parking management district. The planning department should work with other municipal agencies to prepare the Title IX amendment text for assembly review in action as a separate ordinance that coordinates with the Title 21 parking amendments ordinance recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that those Title IX amendments should address seven key characteristics as bulleted on page 18 of the staff report memorandum for this amendment. And third and last amendment, to amend the Title 21 parking reduction for district parking. This appears in subsection 21.07.090F7. This is an existing administrative parking reduction available on Title 21 to clarify, and the amendment to this existing parking reduction is to clarify that the parking reduction is actually not about a parking district, but rather is regarding developments that are near individual public parking facilities, and to amend the language as shown on page 18 in the staff report. With these three amendments, the department recommends approval. The planning department submits on page 19 of the staff memorandum, draft findings of fact for the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration. And those nine findings of fact are there on page 19. After the Planning and Zoning Commission closes the public hearing, the planning department's staff is available upon the request of the commission to address the public comments received on this case in an issue response memorandum, received in Attachment 6, received in the supplementary attachment, provided the commission today with additional comments from the two community councils, as well as any testimony that the commission hears tonight. Such an issue response summary from the department could, in response to the public comments, include additional recommended edits from the planning department, edits to the public hearing draft Title 21 Parking and Site Access Amendments. And I think that concludes our staff report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you through the chair. Staff, thank you very much. I understand that you're just two of the representatives here, and a large team has been involved in the work that's gone into this. It's impressive in, in many ways. In terms of helping you do your job better, and the on-street beneficial parking areas that we talked about in Title, Title IX that are proposed, department recommendation number two has some language to that effect, but I feel like there's not much teeth there. Is there anything that we as a commission could do to elevate that language, maybe change a should to a shall? Don't know if the department would entertain any time horizon or any other language that might help you move forward in that direction.
The department would not object to such changes if, if the, the commission finds that it wants to make its language more directive and less of a should. And it is our intent to work with other agencies, you know, this quarter, this spring, this year, and to, through a public process, bring forward the text amendments to Title IX that are equivalent to, and possibly better than the, the language that we're deleting from the proposed Title 21. So no real objections to that type of strengthening.
Okay, seeing nothing pending, we'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this case? Feel free to come forward. It's a light touch on the.
There's a little piece of white tape there. Okay. Sorry, thank you. My name is Kathy.
My name is Kathy Gleason, Kathy with a C, G-L-E-A-S-O-N. I am currently vice president and co-chair of the Turnigan Land Use Committee, and I am testifying on behalf of the community council this evening. So, thank you so much for having us and allowing us to provide input. We apologize we didn't get our comments in earlier. We met with Mr. Davis. Always appreciate when he meets with our land use committee, and he did on March 30th. And then we had our council meeting last Thursday on April 7th, and that's when we approved these comments, so we apologize that they didn't get in sooner. As you probably have scanned through them, we do have some concerns with regard to some of the proposals, but I guess I do want to interject that community councils such as Fairview, if they support these proposals in their own neighborhoods, you know, we certainly have no business telling them otherwise, but just from a, kind of our gut tells us that some of these might not play out in a positive way, even though from a 30,000-foot view, they certainly may have some merit. And so, we kind of broke our comments down into four categories. One was that these code amendment changes could create additional on-street parking. And I know certainly Turnigan, especially our narrower streets and old Turnigan, there was lots of snow piled up this winter, and literally, traffic was down to one lane. Then where do you put on-street parking if there's less parking requirements on-site in housing development? And I just don't, I don't know how you get around the reality of our winter northern conditions with regard to, this will result in a lot of demand for on-street parking. Even though it's lower housing and they may not, residents may not have as many vehicles, more people tend to live in a housing unit maybe than was originally intended, and there could be more vehicles per unit than you might realize, or as one would think. And also with regard to bike, the incentives to provide bike areas enclosed, which was made very clear, that's all great, and I think there are a lot more winter bikers, but I don't think the majority of bikers who may choose to use that as their primary way to commute to work or to go out and get on the coastal trail, they still own a car as well. So, having biking areas in the summertime on-site of a housing development, but reducing in turn the parking for that same resident in that same unit to have a vehicle, I think hasn't, it just seems, it seems a little doubtful, again, in this city under these winter conditions. So, that's kind of, and then, and then again, that would create potentially a lot more on-site parking. And also, there's more of a demand now that since codes got changed for allowing ADUs, that there's more parking demand just because more people are living in a lot, that you've got your primary house and your ADUs, so that could potentially create more parking. Then you add this on top of it, on-street parking again will bear the brunt of that and the surrounding neighbors who have to navigate those streets. It could become an issue. And certainly, we're concerned because of the by right part of this. If traffic engineering doesn't have to review a development proposal because they can just do this on their own, and then as somebody rightly questioned, what if there's problems after the development has put in, after the parking spaces have put in, the landscaping, the enclosed bike spaces, and there's a parking issue? If the city can go back and review it, that's great, but to what end? There won't be any more space within that footprint to put back more parking to address the issues. So, that's a question that I think needs to be further, further looked at. And we do appreciate, there's, but it looks like there's going to be work to Title IX as well. Our council, our land use committee really narrowed it on, you know, you approve this now, but the other, the other part of that with Title IX isn't done concurrently with this. We'd prefer it be done concurrently, but certainly very soon after if all of these amendments are passed. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. We do have one question here for you. Commissioner Strick.
Thank you, and thank you for the input. We've heard during the course of the, this particular process for this initiative that there's been a number of community outreach and so forth. Was your community council, did it provide input prior to the submission we have here?
Well, actually, we did. You know, this isn't, this hasn't come up just now, and we certainly have gotten, I've seen at the Federation of Community Council delegate level where there was presentations made, and also brief discussions at previous community council meetings as this has moved forward, on the community review draft, which came out, and I think comments were due by the end of December. Instead of, and also, again, Tom Davis came to our land use committee meeting to talk about, present these proposals, which, again, we really appreciate. Lot of, lot of outreach from, by the municipality to our community council anyway. And instead of submitting comments at that point, we submitted about 19 questions because this did just generate a lot of, wow, you know, these are, these are interesting proposals. Will they really work? And so, then we did get a response by Tom to those questions. Now, excuse me, once the public hearing draft came out, then, you know, we started this, this process as well.
So, in your opinion, during the evolution of this process and so forth that's taken time, have you seen changes to the plan as it was originally presented? And is this a culmination, or are these concerns that you're raising here in your, in the memo that came from Turnigan Council, are these ones that have been put forth but never addressed?
Well, I think to a certain degree, the planning department did a good job of responding to our questions. I'm not, I think that the committee and then in turn, the council as a whole, hasn't felt like they've really adequately addressed them. And I'm certainly not an expert, and I haven't pored through this line by line, so I probably can't answer that, but maybe the planning department could, so.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name's Donovan Kamp, and I'm here to ask the planning team...
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, if you were able to, you'd maybe lift that up and just speak a little closer to the mic.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, yeah, my name is Donovan Kamp, and I'm actually here to ask the planning team and zoning commission to give a strong consideration to actually eliminating the Title 21 parking minimums. Eliminating parking minimums is an increasing common change. Many cities have chosen to successfully achieve many of our cities' same planning goals. Lifting our requirements would greatly simplify our Title 21 code. It would free up the countless hours it takes people to navigate these codes. It also restores the freedoms to developers and homeowners over their own property. Parking needs is an issue that those parties have the best knowledge of, and they will continue to add the appropriate level of parking and number of spaces that they need. These seems, this seems to align with popular Alaskan views, and I've attended several of the planning meetings on this issue, and I heard an overwhelming public request for moving the minimums. Parking minimums equate to a subsidy, and this subsidy comes an extremely high cost. These costs include reduction of possible housing in our city, economic growth, walkability, clean air, and the overall attractiveness of our city. Why we are, why are we placing parking over the needs of more housing, over accessible housing, and over affordable housing? I agree with the bike parking requirements as a, as a part of the code because the bike, biking and walking is something that has a lot of valuable benefits to our city. Driving, or parking, on the other hand, for vehicles do not carry the same benefits, and I don't think it's something our city needs to be subsidizing any longer. And this is a huge issue. We've heard from the planning team before, something like there's 25% overutilization of parking requirements. And I'll invite the team to just take a look at Google Earth at our town here and look at all of the parking areas and how many of them are actually just completely, are underutilized. You can go into Google Earth and look at many of the years back, and you'll notice like, you'll notice many of the parking areas are less than half utilized. And I would invite you to look at those areas as potential for the city, potential for businesses. And taxable land use acre per, or taxable land use per acre is a really good correlation of the, to show a city's economic health. Spreading out our utilities, roadways, and maintenance in an area increases the cost to build everything, particularly in a winter city. So, parking minimums do a lot to, do a lot to reduce that area or taxable base per acreage area. So, it's time that Anchorage follows the growing number of cities that have ended their parking minimums after recognizing the code that they have imposed. Yeah, lacks the problems that they're trying to solve.
Thanks. Thank you for your testimony. Can you spell your last name real quick?
Yeah, it's Kamp, C-A-M-P.
Thank you.
Is this still on? Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Emily Weiser, that's W-E-I-S-E-R. I'm here speaking on behalf of Bike Anchorage. I am the board president with Bike Anchorage. So, we've submitted some written comments for you in the packet as well, and we just wanted to reiterate, thank you, reiterate a couple of the main points that we made in those comments. So, the first is that we strongly support the proposed changes to the bike parking requirements. They do a really nice job of providing usable and convenient and safe and secure bike parking, and that's something that we often hear from Bike Anchorage members and other members of the public who would like to bike more. They'd like to use their bike for transportation, but they don't because they don't feel safe about leaving their bike either at their destination, which is especially important if it's a workplace where they might be leaving it all day, or storing it at home. If they don't have somewhere safe to store it, that can be a real hurdle for biking more, or as much as they would like. And in some cases, that does make the difference between deciding to trade in maybe at least one car in a two-car household and exclusively using a bike in place of that one car. So, the proposed changes do a really nice job of addressing that need and providing more and safer bike parking. And then our second comment is about the proposed changes to the car parking minimums. Now, of course, Bike Anchorage advocates for bicycling primarily, but the car parking minimums do affect all of us in terms of increasing housing costs, limiting development for small businesses, and contributing to a car-centric way of life in our city. So, we'd like to speak in support of eliminating the car parking requirements, the car parking minimums entirely, because that would be a more effective way to mitigate those problems than the incremental reductions that are currently proposed in the revisions. And of course, we do hear arguments from the community that eliminating car parking requirements seems really drastic, right? But we'd like to remind everybody that the actual changes that we'll see will be gradual because these, these proposed changes apply only to new development or redevelopment. They're not going to change everything overnight. So, you know, new development is relatively rare and sparse throughout Anchorage. So, as those changes are implemented, it'll be gradual and piecemeal, and we'll have time to figure out how to best manage on-street parking, which would benefit what we have already, right? With the snow removal problems and things like that, maybe we could work on an alternate side parking plan that a lot of winter cities use to facilitate snow removal. And also because it will be a gradual and piecemeal change, that's another reason to really make sure these revisions are forward-looking and thinking about what our city needs in the future, you know, decades from now, when these changes will finally be fully realized. So, those are our two main comments. We provided a couple other suggestions for minor changes to the bike parking specifications that you can find in the packet, and we thank you very much for your consideration and for your time on this topic.
Thank you for your testimony.
Can you folks hear me? All right. I'm Stephen Bridwell. I am a professionally certified Alaskan educator and a mine site camp manager for a mine up in the Brooks Range. I ask you to lift Anchorage's mandatory parking minimums as these rules cause harm to our community's financial strength and resilience. Presently, these minimums have filled our city with unproductive, empty parking spaces that push homes and businesses farther apart, impede the walkability of our neighborhoods, and raise the cost of housing. In the absence of parking minimums, we could build more housing or businesses, I'm testifying, because I looked a year for affordable housing prior to moving down from my hometown in Fairbanks. By pure chance, I found some housing in September, but only after considering not coming, not adding my economic value to South Central. And my plight is not singular. In tonight's Alaska Public Media, there is an article published that interviews a UAA economist studying real estate markets who agrees housing in Anchorage is frustratingly competitive. Had there never been parking minimums, more housing might presently exist, and my long search could never have occurred. Should you lift Anchorage's parking minimums, we'll still have parking, but that which is determined by the businesses and realtors building on our finite land. Thank you.
Can you, sorry, can you state and spell your last name again for the record?
Bridwell, B as in Bravo, R-I-D as in Delta, W-E-L-L.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else come forward. I'm guessing that means no one else wishes to speak, but now is the time if you would Okay, I think we do have one person who's scheduled to testify by phone that will move
Hi, this is Lindsay.
Hi, Lindsay. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for public testimony on case 2022-26. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
Okay, I'm testifying as an individual.
Okay, you will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Please state your full name for the record, and you can begin.
Great, thank you. My name's Lindsay Hajduk, that's H-A-J-D-U-K, and I'm calling in support of the staff recommendations to reduce and in some cases eliminate parking requirements. And I do support the notion of going further and having the municipality eliminate parking requirements altogether. I support the overall goals of the amendments that the staff laid out, and especially in allowing for safer bicycle parking. Within my neighborhood of Spinard and other neighborhoods across Anchorage, residents have been working hard to create neighborhoods that are easier to navigate through public transit or on-site. transit or on foot or on bike. And in my neighborhood, we're really working to promote reinvestment and redevelopment within our neighborhood. So I want to see people-focused projects rather than car-focused projects. And much of our neighborhood is along a transit-supported development corridor, so we hope to promote less vehicle use by promoting and providing alternatives, reducing parking requirements, recognizes and encourages people to use these other forms of transportation, and while reducing the footprint of parking lots that other community, that our community desperately needs. We recognize parking won't go away, but it would better meet the needs of the property and the community. So we've already shared, I've already heard lots of reasons to reduce or eliminate parking minimums, and I would also just go further and say that these changes support a more resilient community, one that we need in the face of climate change. So as we know, these benefits and changes would happen over a long period of time, it's important to start now. So I urge the commission to pass these amendments. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Or I guess, are there any questions before I hang up?
I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it time for staff rebuttal, or does the department have a chance to respond? If so, I'd like to direct them to a certain item of interest.
Yeah, that was, I was going to ask them if they had any specific comments they want to make, but feel free to identify the, your question.
Okay. Staff, in your response, I'd appreciate you touching upon the item that was raised by Ms. Gleason around, as it was described or is described in writing in their community council comments, eliminating the opportunity for public notice input and allowing administrative and by right approval. If you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, through the chair, we can respond to that. Currently, the parking reductions that are Title 21 get approved through an administrative discretionary process that is, involves traffic engineer and the planning director. It's not a public process. There isn't notice currently. The discretionary process provides the opportunity for the traffic engineer to often request a parking study or direct the applicant to a different parking reduction choice, parking strategy, parking reduction strategy, but there's no public review. There are, occasionally, there are variances where the applicant is requesting such a change that really goes through the variance process. Those can go to a board, but the, that process isn't being changed. The change is that those administrative discretionary reductions that go to the traffic engineer and the planning director, that some of those become non-discretionary and up to a certain percentage reduction. So for example, with the bicycle parking, you can get up to, if you provide up bike spaces, you can get up to 10% reduction in your automobile parking requirement. And that is non-discretionary. In other words, if you meet the parking dimensional standards and development standards for the bike parking that you're providing, and you demonstrate in your site plan that you're providing those extra bike spaces, then you're meeting the letter of the code, and then it's just a matter of, you know, having the regular zoning plan reviewers review it like as if they were reviewing any other Title 21 requirement. So it's, takes it out of discretionary review by the traffic engineer and just into a non-discretionary view, but it's the same administrative review process. If the applicant wants to get a bigger reduction than 10% for the bike parking, for example, that kicks them back into the same old current process, which is a discretionary review, and then say they want, you know, 15% reduction or whatnot. Or if they want to make a different kind of change, maybe that a different kind of proposal, there's different kinds of strategies they could propose that aren't listed on the menu that we've provided, then that also kicks them back into the same current Title 21 discretionary approval process, which is review and approval by the traffic engineer and the planning director. The discretionary, non-discretionary, basically with some exceptions, the cumulative, cumulative non-discretionary parking reduction that, that one can accumulate through, you know, multiple combinations of different parking reductions is, I believe, 25%. And so if, if an applicant is combining bicycle parking and, I don't know, transit, free transit passes, or other kinds of reductions, and they're accumulating more than a 25% reduction, the proposal is that that also would kick them into, back into the old discretionary review process. So it's just a, the change is really, is it just how streamlined that internal administrative review is, there isn't a, a public process. At the back end, as we discussed in the work session earlier, if there is a problem, or if there's a, you know, in the case where there is a parking or spillover parking resulting from the development, and they have, and they have received parking reductions, we, the process still includes, at the end, at the end of the process, there is still the requirement that the, there be a recorded parking agreement that runs with the land that, that documents that the applicant has agreed to provide the extra bicycle parking, or they've agreed to unbundle, you know, the cost of parking from the cost of their apartment dwellers' rents or whatnot, and also documents that they have a right to have less parking spaces. So it protects all parties. But as we discussed in the work session, if there is a problem that results from these parking reductions, that the municipality has the opportunity to go back and require revisitation of that, that parking reduction and possibly require the applicant to correct the problem by adding other strategies. And there are parking reduction strategies that don't, you know, require them to add parking spaces or bike spaces or change their site plan. There can be things they can do to manage parking demand that are just programmatic, many of which are listed in the menu. So we don't believe there's a change that affects the public's ability to comment or be noticed or whatnot on these that, that exists now, that exists today that would be taken away. Thank you to the chair.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I guess since we didn't have any further testimony, and we heard the testimony by phone, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point and look to the commission for what they want to do. And I'll note the offer from staff, if there are more specific questions, like Commissioner Ron had from the comments we received today, to provide us an issue response laying out their specific answers if we desire.
I move in case 2022-0026 to recommend to the municipal assembly approval of the public hearing draft Title 21 text amendments to the Parking and Site Access Regulations per department recommending findings, and with the requirement that we see the responses to any remaining questions that are proposed from here on out. The table.
So just to clarify, Commissioner Polis, are you interested in seeing their responses before we, we resolve the case?
No, I don't, I don't think that's a requirement of it. They just need to be responded to, I think, and forwarded to the assembly.
So, okay, just, I just want to make sure I understand what you're...
I don't want to delay the process.
Okay, so you're not wanting to delay, to forward to the assembly with their comments, is what your motion is?
Yes, yes.
And then I guess just as a further clarification, Commissioner Polis, were you including in the motion for approval the, the proposed amendments that staff included in the packet? Okay. Commissioner Polis, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think the motion meets the approval criteria outlined in the staff packet. I believe there is a need out there to reduce parking requirements in certain areas, and you can see it on the streets, and I think this is a good starting point to get that process going, so.
Thank you. Fellow commissioners, I appreciate the positive motion being quickly put on the table. I intend to support as well. I'd ask Commissioner Polis and Spinelli if they would entertain a friendly amendment, and I'll talk through what that is, and if it doesn't fall within the remit of a friendly amendment, then I'll move forward with a motion to amend. As I had asked staff earlier in the case, and they responded with a willingness to have a little more directive language in recommendation two, and I'd like to kind of move in that direction if commissioners are interested in doing so. So in the middle of that paragraph, it says the planning department should work with other municipal agencies. You know, we heard a commitment from staff that, yes, they intend to do so. For what it's worth, I'd propose that we change that should to a shall to be more directive there. I would also add to that, we heard a lot of testimony about doing away with onsite parking minimums. Clearly, there's a movement there that I would like to find a way to acknowledge and enable the planning department to continue moving in that direction if we approve these changes as proposed as well. I don't want, you know, what may be good here to get in the way of or pause movement in that greater direction. So wondering if we could add a sentence or two about, you know, in parallel evaluating or moving forward with an evaluation of the elimination of on-street, excuse me, onsite parking minimums. Looking for feedback or response from Commissioner Polis or Spinelli.
So my suggestion, Commissioner Ron, given the, kind of some of the, some of the detail that went into the comment there, that I think, I think a motion to amend might be appropriate, and then that could be discussed and evaluated and put in place for those changes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and move to amend the motion on the floor, changing that should to a shall, and adding a statement within that paragraph that the planning department shall move forward with an evaluation of the elimination of onsite parking minimums.
And so the, the should you're referring to is a sentence in, on page 18 in item number two, the planning department should work with other municipal agencies, is to change that to a shall?
Yes.
And then add a sentence that says the planning department should? And can you clarify how that sentence ends? Sorry.
Should work with other municipal agencies in evaluating the elimination of onsite parking minimums.
Okay, thank you.
minimums per code, not eliminating parking, but eliminating the standard for minimums.
If that's clear enough there, Commissioner Ron, that motion is seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Commissioner Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Chair. I believe I already did, and I'll open it up to others.
Okay, Commissioner Strike has been in the queue here. Go ahead, Commissioner Strike.
And thank you through the chair. And while I was in the queue before that motion, I'll speak to that amendment to the motion, and that I would support that motion, although to the body of the main motion, my concern still is, I still want to see the questions to the responses, answers to the questions that we, that are placed before I vote. So I'm hesitant there. And the other one is, I appreciate the process by which we've gone through, looked at the parking and the situation involving there, but I'm trying to think that there's not a alternative way. I think that the, what's before us and what the planners should have is a tool in their box that would allow them even to go so far as to eliminate the parking requirement, but I think it's a tool. I don't think it's a by right requirement that is just an open, that's open to all. Some of these subdivisions are unique, that they're not all the same, but by right, we take away part of that review process. And so, you know, you have cul-de-sacs, you have alleys, you got corner lots, you got traffic flows, et cetera, but it, I'd prefer to see an administrative process where the option to present for development allows for this reduction of parking to take place. And we do it not on an ad hoc or wholesale basis, but more on a case-by-case basis so that it can take time to review the individual properties that are involved. And I think we could even go a step further. The, what was proposed and so forth of reducing it down one level, as I recall the graph, we could reduce it down even further on certain case-by-case basis to accomplish what we're trying to do here. But currently, that tool's not available to developers. But having this as a tool for them to now access, I think, I'm more comfortable that direction than to create a wholesale change to the process and make it a by right, which I believe the Ternigan Council expressed concern as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Spinelli. Commissioner Spinelli.
I intend to support the amendment. And I guess while I'm on the mic, I'll respond to Commissioner Strike's comment. I, I think the tools do exist that you're talking about. I think there are things in codes that allow for what you're doing, what you're speaking of. And I think a lot, you, you might, I think a lot of those cases probably go before the Urban Design Commission, so we're not seeing them. So therefore, you might not realize that they're out there. But the site plan reviews, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but site plan reviews and variances, and then the PUD process also allows for major code changes, similar to the previous case with the Girdwood Development, where they're allowed to actually make changes to code for a project. And I think that's what you were describing. So those things do exist and in some instances, they come before this body. But I think many of them go to other boards and commissions.
Can I address?
Let's, let's finish them.
Since he addressed me.
The, I'd like to get through the, the pending motion to amend and then we can go back to comments on the, on the main motion. So if there are any other pending comments on the motion to amend, which is again to increase the directive to planning department so that they shall work with other municipal agencies to prepare the Title IX amendment and then also adding a requirement that they should work with those agencies to eliminate onsite parking minimums. Seeing no pending comments there, we'll go ahead and move from, call the vote on that motion to amend.
Ms. Krishna?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion to amend passes. We now have the main motion as amended back before us. Commissioner Strike.
Yeah, thank you. And then, and thank you, Commissioner Spinelli, for the feedback on that. But what I'm hearing you say too, though, is that there's a process problem. And maybe efforts should be made to change and fix the process as opposed to going out there and changing the cold code on a wholesale basis. And so, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, but let's fix the process for these folks, these developers who are coming in looking for those changes. Let's give them an avenue to be heard. Because if it's been blocked somehow through whatever administrative process that's out there currently, that system's broken then. Thank you.
I guess I'm seeing nothing, no one pending here for myself. I would, I think with Commissioner Strike, be interested in seeing further comments from staff as an issue response table to the items that we heard today. I, you know, this has been a lengthy process. It'll be great to get something through, but I don't think there is a particularly specific deadline for this. And some of the comments, I think, do go to broader issues that have been kind of discussed and worked through in the process. But there are also some that I think give specific recommendations to changes that might lead to amendments. And I think we're in a, we're the body that can help, help provide that clarity if nothing else at this point. So I'd be interested to getting that, that feedback before we move forward. That's my thought at the moment. Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, so my original com, my comments on the original motion were gonna be that I'm generally supportive and I'm, I'm not necessarily in a hurry or a rush to see this thing move forward tonight. I would be happy to be done with this section of code. But generally speaking, I guess echoing what I've heard from others is I'm, I don't feel like I'm in a big rush to do it. I'm generally supportive. There's certain things that concern me, but generally speaking, I support, supported the motion.
Commissioner Polis.
I feel like everyone's looking at me to just include that. So I have no problem adapting based on majority rule of, of all of our opinions being that, you know, it's not a big deal to wait until we get the responses in the next packet to make this ruling. Is that the way we're going there? But I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Spinelli.
I, I believe the appropriate move would be a motion to postpone.
That's my understanding as well. We've got the motion pending. If someone wants to offer a motion to postpone, then we could quickly vote on that and provide information to staff as to exactly what additional information we might look for before we then take up the, the pending motion again. Commissioner Polis.
Based on the comments heard here tonight, I have no problem postponing the case until we can see the, all comments have been responded to by the department.
Okay, so that will be most, motion to postpone until we can receive comments from the planning department in response to the comments that we received this evening. That motion is seconded by Commissioner Eber. I don't know if there's anything further you want to add to your motion, Commissioner Polis. Okay, we will call a vote on that motion to postpone.
Ms. Krishna?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That motion passes. The case is postponed. No further items on the agenda. We'll just look to adjourn if I can see a motion from anybody. Moved by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.